Okay, welcome back everybody online in the audience. We're back in our BOE session for the afternoon of June 28th. I think if I counted right, we have nine left. You didn't get all those packets that was in my mailbox this morning?
No.
Eddie.
It's soon.
Oh, are they the turn now?
Yes.
Okay, she'll have to make sure that they were by the deadline or sent by the deadline postmarked.
And then I'm assuming then that we're gonna go to the next appeal, which is 2305 Tyler Lamb. I'll turn it over to you guys.
So Tyler says on his appeal assessed value is significantly higher than appraised value as of March 2022. I have included a copy of the appraisal. You guys all have that?
Yep.
And so...
Theirs came in at 828,300?
No, they're at 912,753.
Let me see that. No, I mean on their appraisal, sorry.
Their appraisal, the appraiser came up with 830,000 as of February 23rd, 2022. And if you take that 830,000 and time trend it for the state tax commission of the 1% for 11 months because their sale was in January. So the adjusted value at 11 months would be 913,000. And we are at 912,753.
Good job.
Easy peasy.
That's pretty darn close, isn't it?
That tells you how well our system is working.
Yeah, exactly.
Good analysis.
I did also provide a sheet that has some of our comps that were used in that neighborhood. And if you look at the end, you can see the price per square foot on each of those sales. And he falls in line very well there. He's at 30410 per square foot. I have 357,282 and 346. And those, there's only one that is the same grade as his house. The other two are half a grade lower.
Now what came in at 357 a square? And this has got more acre.
Yeah, they have, everyone had less acreage than he does as well.
Where is this in relation to, is this up west of McCall? I don't know where we're looking.
It's in Brookdale Meadows subdivision.
Henry, Flight Fork Road is right here. There's Norwood and then Highway 55.
Okay.
And there's the highway.
Yep.
The comps I gave, one is in his subdivision and two of them are in Carefree, which is to the east of the highway. Very similar neighborhood.
And where's he at on there? Oh, right there.
The blue highlight here.
Yep. And I know where that's at. Norwood. Or County Mountain. Our county lives right there.
So anyway, I feel like with that time adjusted, value, we're right there.
I gotta recuse myself from this one. It's my tax account.
No, we all know everybody in tax accounts. You can't do that.
I don't wanna raise my taxes.
I get it.
I think you did a great job, so Mr. Chairman, I believe that we decline 2305 and take the assessor's value.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we are currently scheduling for next week's visit.
Okay.
We will have three...
Advertise?
No. I haven't advertised. Highway Chapel, we did not, I did not.
Okay.
So we're gonna hear that again this morning. Melvin, please email back, ask for...
Okay.
Then the Girl Scouts...
So that's the fifth?
Wednesday, the 5th at 9:00 AM, we'll be in Highway Chapel, first thing. The Girl Scouts, Oki, Paul, they're not, they don't have any desire to come back in front of you. And I get you need to state whatever your decision is on the Alzaro. And then the stack that you...
We'll do that on the fifth. The Alzaro on the fifth as well.
Uh, that's what we asked for, yes. Uh, Norine, you're on your personal appearance on Munson.
Yes, I spoke with him and he filled through a phone. So I saved 1:45, we would call him. So we've got seven minutes and I need to...
Who, I'm sorry, who are we calling?
Uh, Mr. Munson.
Munson, okay. 2325. Only person, alright. Uh, so who is the opposite? This one's pretty difficult.
I don't know. That's Jen's.
Okay. Is that the only commercial?
It's an MBF property.
I'm not sure about, no, let's see, the MBF looks like it's a Tamrac appeal and I don't believe that's commercial. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it there.
No worries. I have all three ready.
Is there invisibility colgan today?
Oh, one of those.
Sometimes I wish I had one too. Yeah, we're getting down to the bottom of it here. We only have what, two or three on Wednesday?
Uh, three for sure and then plus whatever that stack was that came in. So what was that, five or six of them?
Hmm, maybe six.
So where are we going next?
We are going to appeal BB 2325 for Mr. Mike Munson and there will be a telephone hearing.
Telephone call. We got about five minutes, so if you need to take a break, this will be the time. Welcome. So our next, uh, item is 2325, appeal 2325.
Hi, this is Mike.
Hi, Mike. This is Commissioner Hasbrook in Valley County. How you doing?
Hey, good. Hey, thank you so much for working with me on this today.
You bet, Mike. The way...
I'm in a spot where I couldn't come down there just to show up today quickly, but you guys really got it top of the bag, so I want to say thanks.
I wish I was in your spot too, but I'm here. So before, before we begin, I need to swear you in, so can you please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, sir. The way this will work is you, you get to go first and we have all the information here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, uh, I did enlist with the help of a Realtor after an year, kind of have assistance with this because I felt 680 was really pretty far out from me, just me knowing my own house here. I know you guys don't get into the specifics of each property, but I had her pull up comp and then the confidence given. You were just the ones that sold in 2022 that we thought best that did the criteria closest to my house. And to cut the story, I guess to cut the story a little bit, I felt like the best comp here, which is a superior rated house in your systems and mine, uh, it sold for $640,000. It's the 132 Brundage Court. It's, uh, comp number D or letter D. And I just felt like there's no way I could be above 640 based on that sale with the amenities and it's on a golf course and, um, it's a newer house, 2012. So I felt like that would be my upside. Again, on the low side, I felt like the 702 Burr Street would probably be the bottom. Uh, it's, uh, called letter E and it's built the same years my house with similar finishes, but it just has the one carport, so I have the advantage of a two-car garage. Um, and it's rated average in your system, just like my house, so, um, then I also had my Realtor just tell me if, you know, if we wanted to sell it this year, which doesn't really affect the value of course in January 1st, but she felt like we'd be headed towards 550, 580 being the high side, and she felt like we could get it sold. So that's the kind of direction I see my value going and I just felt like the 680 was pretty far out there. Um, I felt like maybe my house was being thrown in with much superior quality homes. Um, so that's short story, I felt like 640 would be the high, probably 580-ish on the low side and that's what I see.
Okay, so now we give the appraiser a chance to talk and prove their side of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, spoke with Mike for quite some length today and, um, I believe June also spoke with him on Monday or Tuesday about his comps and about his area and things that are happening. I think with Mike's home and where it is located, he's kind of gotten wrapped up in a neighborhood that doesn't fit his home. So his phone, home is kind of inferior to his location. Um, because the comps that I did find that were right with the same years of his home and same square footage and the selling price, we're coming in at approximately 332 a square foot and we have him at 351. So I know it, I personally would like to adjust him down to the 330. I don't know if that is something that you guys would like to do. That is purely up to you. Um, he has a very square box of a home. Most of the homes in the neighborhood of 539700 are quite large homes. The granite, the, you know, the real nice ones, you know, that look more...
Yeah, granite finishes.
Little bit, yeah, a little bit better finishes, superior to his. He has just a very plain, square house. But I think because of his location and the way the analysis is ran, his square footage is being brought up higher.
And is that the reason, I mean, why the land values are so higher, so much higher than the others?
Yes, that's why his land value is higher because of his location.
Mike, are you related to Melanie?
It's my sister-in-law.
Well, I guess my feeling is, um, if the appraiser is asking for a reduced or square foot cost, you have that new value. Have you figured that out?
That, yes, that is, that would be on the property profile that I gave you.
And have you discussed this with Mike and he was not...
I have discussed, I have discussed it with Mike and I did tell him that we are going to present it in front of the commissioners and ultimately it is your decision.
So the new value would come back in at 654174?
Correct.
Instead of 681644. Mike, how's that sound to you?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping more towards being below the 640, the one superior comp that I provided, but at least her value is coming in, you know, closer to, you know, that number I think is probably realistic. I just felt like there was no way I could be above that 640 without home having, uh, superior location and amenities and a higher grade in your system.
Yeah, I think we've really...
She's been great to work with today, I have to tell you that too.
She is great to work with and I think what's hurting you more than anything is the land value. It's quite a bit harder than some of the others.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's location, location.
Not only that though, but Mike, you are below the other comp that you think that you're most comparable with. You're just bigger than they are.
Yeah.
When you take the average square footage, I mean, that is reflective of that.
Yeah, I think we were, I might write the thing maybe 50ps or something like that, different thing.
Yeah, 70.
70, okay, there we go.
It will. I, you know, it is location, location, location. I don't...
It's the land that's pumped you up. So I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we, uh, approve the new value as recommended by the appraiser of 654,174 for this parcel now, I forgot the name, for Mr. Munson's parcel, protest number 2325.
Oh, seconded.
All thirded.
And move seconded and thirded. All in favor?
Yeah, I really appreciate you guys helping me out today with this, but thank you very much and I'm sure we can work with that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm gonna make sure we write this down.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Marianne. Appreciate it today. Thank you. And again, I appreciate your time and thanks for doing this today. It's been helping me out a lot.
Good, Mike. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. Bye now.
Oh, I just put...
Figure out why we were hearing from you and you didn't just work with him. And when he said he wanted a lower, it was like, okay, now I understand.
Well, they came in like, you know, 11th hour.
Yeah.
It was in the mail yesterday.
It was in the mail yesterday.
Yeah, so we didn't have it on.
I didn't have time for my comps, I don't know, for to process where they had.
Up here, I can do it.
At Lake Club, three square footage in here, at Lake Club.
I need to change the motion Doug to approve.
You, you made the right, correct motion.
Okay.
Chairman has made a motion to approve the new value as recommended by the appraiser for the parcel.
Yeah, it's already getting tired and it's not even two bucks.
Okay, Juste, Justine, do you wanna...
So Justine, are you doing MBF Property Trust?
She's, she's doing the Batman Properties, so 2326.
Oh, Batman Properties. I didn't know that he lived up here. I do have bats though, so I can say, the Batman.
That's actually her last name too.
Oh, wow.
Did you bring, bring cookies?
I had a bat in my house the other day.
In your house.
In my house.
In the house.
I get one a year. Oh, Fred, get you.
Don't be nervous, we don't bite.
No?
It was on his bed.
My wife just bought it. So I'm gonna turn it over to you and let's see what you got.
All right. We are doing appeal number JW2326, property owner Batman Properties, Camus LLC. Subject property parcel number RPM 04010100130. Subject property address is 902 Camus Place. The subject property is located in Spring Mountain Ranch subdivision. The property consists of .29 acres. The parcel includes a 1,656 square foot living space, a 1,176 square foot basement garage for a total square footage of 2,832. It was built in 1995. The effective year is 2005. It's graded as a good plus. Below are the values for the last three years. And then the appellant offered several comparables. Please refer to pages three and four of the appellant's package. Comparables listed on page three are primarily from the west side of McCall, whereas the comps on page four are within the appellant's subdivision of Spring Mountain Ranch. And then...
So the median square foot's 51184?
Uh, she's claiming. I have, um, so my spreadsheet is on the very back page and I took three of her comps from Spring Mountain that she gave us and broke them down. Um, so the medium square price, or price per square foot is 485 and she's coming in at 479. So she's just a little bit under.
More closer to your middle comp, didn't she, as far as increased size and dwelling size?
Yeah.
What's her square, what's her square footage again?
So...
On the dwelling?
Her total square footage is 2832, but she only wants to go off of her living square footage she thinks should be only calculated, not all of it. So she only wants to be done at the 1,656.
So the other is a basement?
So it's a, yeah, basement garage.
And is it finished?
No.
It probably has. It, from what we can see, we have it as unfinished, the basement garage, so it is not being calculated into the price per square foot necessarily, but it is being calculated as a garage. So the overall, the way that our system works, our overall square footage shows that it's 2,832, is that, yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
2,832. So when you look at the three comparables that Justine has listed there, you'll, those are the full sale price, taking in consideration garages, house square footage, the land, all of it. And it's coming out to the price per square foot, 466, 423, 566 for the average. So if we take just her house and we put it all together, we have the price per square foot at 479. So it's apples to apples when we, when we do it. Well, she's not wanting it that way. She wants us to just take her 656. Not, not the whole thing.
Can you explain that to her and she just...
Yeah. Several, several times. I don't, I don't know how else to explain it to her.
You did it just right.
Not everybody picks up on that.
Yeah.
We do everything the same. This is equalization for all property owners.
Looks like a pretty nice house.
In fact, I believe that middle one is the one that's identical to hers with the way it's set up. The garage on the bottom.
Well, I think you did a great job, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we deny the appeal for, which one was it again?
2326.
Batman Properties. 2326. Well, I can't see that. Second. And move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right.
Are you gonna do, is she gonna do the MBF one?
I don't know yet. I gotta roll up my list. I'm guessing Jen is up.
Welcome, Jen. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, I'm going to do, um, Meldrum? Sounds good, you good?
Alyssa?
2309?
2309. Meldrum, Melissa Meldrum. Yep, number line 17. Ooh.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry, my zooming here is... So here's West Mountain Road.
Well, it's right in the middle of the village, isn't it?
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, I know right where that's at. Okay, go ahead, Jen.
All right. Um, for the record, my name is Jennifer Boyd, certified appraiser number 1298. Uh, the next two appeals are gonna be Tamrac Properties, so I just, you know, wanted to let the board know kind of how we came to our numbers. Um, not including condos. Uh, we had 14 qualified sales that were reported and used in the analysis, uh, analysis of Tamrac. Of those 14 sales, four were cottages, three were townhomes and seven were single-family residences. So with Tamrac being kind of its own community, a lot of people are concerned about whether they're being valued with Tamrac or... So I just wanted to clarify this. These are the sales. This is what was used.
It's its own neighborhood, so to speak. Gotcha.
Um, okay. So this is appeal number JB 2309. Property owner is Melissa Meldrum. Parcel number is RP 00517003021A. And the subject property address is 12 Haystack Court. Uh, the property consists of .3155 acres.
Uh, the property consists of point three one five five acres. The parcel includes a two thousand five hundred sixty six square foot home and six hundred fifty square foot basement garage, built in two thousand and five, graded as excellent. Uh, below are the values for the last three years. Uh, the appellate offered no comparable sales and a spreadsheet of the comps that the assessor's office used or attached.
It's amazing that that small a home praises for one point six.
One two.
Yeah, we're just talking about house. Just the house. That seems excessive.
So Jen, the average per square foot for those four comps is five seventy eight twenty five, is that correct? That you got? This is about twenty bucks more a square foot.
I did not average it out, but I would like to point out that, um, the last two are townhome sales. So they do share a wall, I provided them to, I I apologize for not sharing that earlier.
The bottom two on your comps?
The bottom two on the comps, yes. So they will be a little bit lower. The most comparable, in my opinion, would be that top. Yeah. It's a standalone, it's actually a chalet. So it's not a custom-built home or anything like that. And it came in at six forty five seventy one.
It's much smaller.
Yeah, but look at the land value, the difference between the two in the land values. Two hundred and eighty thousand. So is that because of just a different neighborhood on the land value or is it?
The third, the size.
It's, Tamarack's a little tricky because, um, we assess it at a site value. And this is what they are going for, um, on this Whitewater Drive area. This Bitterroot Chalet is towards the, uh, south end of Tamarack.
Yeah, sure, you made a good point that this lot is a third of an acre versus a twelfth of an acre, a little over tenth of an acre. Might be a little low.
Well, if that's what the sales are showing, then we got a comp too.
And that's a custom house, isn't it?
I think you're right on.
Thank you.
So square foot home and six hundred foot, fifty square foot basement garage.
Five.
So yeah, you're looking at thirty thirty one hundred, thirty two hundred square foot place.
Our, the cottages, um, which are about twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred fifty square feet. Um, they're going for one point two to one point three. So their price per square foot's actually higher, um, in the six hundred range. Um, on these, based on these fourteen sales, um, our ratio, our assessed value compared to our sales, uh, we averaged a hundred percent and then our median was eighty six point five. And it will be in our revale area this year, so it'll be there. It's bells on.
Yay.
Yeah, I think you picked this one just right, square footage, the year it's built, everything is getting together real nice.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny twenty three oh nine and accept the appraiser's value.
Second. If you second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Final sign this one.
We just finished Warren's eight thousand square foot house.
I wasted half a signature there.
I had to clear about the falls.
I had to concentrate, you know?
Huge.
Selling them crazy.
A lot of people are gonna take, start taking shots at me and signing all this, so somebody else should sign, it's like Doug or somebody. Okay, that one was.
Okay, the next one is MBF Property Trust, uh, JB twenty three twenty two. Looks like it's another Tamarack property as well. Yeah, we've got it up on the screen, it's up off of Discovery.
Valley County Homes, also decreased by fourteen percent?
Sugarloaf is off to the left.
Oh. Right in front, right next to the ski hill. Hey, go ahead Jen.
All right. This is appeal JB twenty three twenty two, property owner MBF Property Trust. Subject property parcel number is RP zero zero four nine two zero one two zero four two zero. Subject property address is ninety four Sugarloaf, Sugarloaf Place. Property consists of point one four seven zero acres. Parcel includes a two thousand four hundred two square foot home and eight hundred forty seven square foot attached garage, built in two thousand and seven, graded as excellent. Below are the values for the last three years. I did not speak to, uh, Barry Bram, he did not call, he just filed the appeal. Um, but he did prepare, uh, he did offer six comparable sales. Uh, five sales are of superior quality and square footage. And I would also like to point out that three of the comps provided were sales that occurred in twenty twenty three. I've broken these comps out on the attached spreadsheet, or I can read through each one, whichever is easiest.
This is ninety, yours is two oh seven. Four hundred square feet.
So what is the grade I or four versus excellent?
Uh, one B is a step above excellent. So I guess a class.
Some of their comps were nicer than their home.
That is correct. So in the appellant's packet, they provided, um, their cost per, uh, square foot, which they did not take out, um, the land value or other buildings. So that number is skewed a bit.
Uh, the two comps you have on Golden Bar Court, are those houses too like this or are they townhouses or? I just wanna make sure it's comparing apples to apples.
These are townhouses.
All of them?
The top top one is a chalet and one thirty council court is a custom home. I felt to sh- share the townhouses with these others because ninety four Sugar, Sugarloaf is in a similar construction.
So they're one on Discovery Drive. It's about the same size, it's six hundred and forty a square foot.
About the same square footage.
Ours is much lower. Are we too low?
Depends who you ask, but I think.
I understand that comment.
Well, look at the land value on this one too versus those top two that she's got, well, the second one's a seven hundred thousand land value.
With the subject being as close as it is to the ski run, um, I don't believe three seventy two is comparable in land. But it is identical in square footage, grade. Um, it was a sale that occurred in March of twenty three. Um, it's the most comparative thing I could ask for. Um, I think.
I mean, that's almost identical, one point seven, four seven zero, one point four six zero. Twenty four hundred, twenty four hundred square feet, both of them. Number six.
Location is the difference.
Number six sold for two million and this one's.
Yeah. I, if I had to guess, I'm kinda agree with you, I think we're a little low on the per square foot, but I'll accept the value you came up with.
Yeah, agree.
I'm gonna, I'll make the motion this time that we deny twenty three twenty two MBF Property Trust. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
In his packet, I mean, all of them, he said he actually sent one in the mail as well, so I bet you that's one of the ones that he.
Which one was that one, twenty? Twenty three twenty two? That was MBF Property?
Hey, what are you doing Jeffrey Kriegel next?
I was hoping to do Albertson's.
Albertson's, okay. That works for me. Twenty three twenty three. Order is ready.
Kriegel's withdrawn.
Oh, he has, yeah, thanks, good catch. Well, this went down in value, am I reading that right?
That is correct.
Cause their roof fell in. Sorry.
I did go look at the building, uh, did happen after the first of the year. Um, so I will just continue to monitor it.
Hopefully they have it fixed. You don't leave that much snow up there.
Hopefully.
Okay Jen, tell us what we're looking at.
Do we have anything that evidence to be so?
What are they asking it to be, that's what I'm, they think it should be seven million six?
They're asking for seven point six. So they're being represented by Altus Group, which is, um, a firm that uses technology to come up with an assessed value. Um, they provided a cost analysis.
So how how do you? Bring me up to speed on this, how would you? What's the formula for doing a commercial building comparative where you have no comps really?
Great question. Uh, replacement cost new minus depreciation. We could also look at income and expense as a another form of valuation, thank you. Cause they provided a cost analysis, um, that that's the way I approached the defense on this one.
Do we have a, what their tax was in twenty two? Where does that at?
That would be here. Here's twenty one, twenty two.
Oh, on the very cover sheet.
Yep. So we've, we've lost not quite a million bucks in that.
And they're wanting us to drop it down to seven point six?
Um, so they, they also base their cost analysis on Marshall and Swift. Um, the supplied analysis failed to include any features, uh, such as eighty one thousand six hundred six square feet of parking space, a one thousand nine hundred eighty square foot still utility building, elevator, sprinklers, canopies, balconies, et cetera. These costs are not included in the base costs the company is referencing per Marshall and Swift. Uh, such neglected, neg- neglected, pardon me, features are estimated to total one thou- one million two hundred nine thousand seven hundred twenty six. And looking at the appellant's cost analysis, they also averaged the base cost between a good and an excellent supermarket. Marshall and Swift describes an excellent classy supermarket as an individually designed structure with a high-cost storefront and well-finished interior with departmental divisions. Um, I've attached some pages from Marshall and Swift. Uh, just, they provide examples, the buildings are a little, little bit older than the subject in the photos, but you can see from the illustration that I believe Albertson's is an excellent.
So Jen, I didn't notice there's an adjustment for them being in the western US, one point zero eight. I did not know that.
Yeah.
And then there's another one for LC and McCall Commercial, that's just standard for growth of commercial in McCall.
It is, so in their, in their cost approach, they also use the regional adjustment. But then they used one point zero four, which is actually the adjustment that Marshall's, Mar- Marshall and Swift supplies. It's actually Boise, um, where we're much more expensive to build.
Okay.
So we're at ten percent, yes.
It looks like even if you added on just the extra stuff to what they actually did is their base cost, we're there. So we're in agreement if they just had compared apples to apples.
Um, this, uh.
Plus they have a lake view, we should charge them extra.
So you, you're agreed that the the ten point six is what you're proposing?
I do, I I propose to sustain our value. Um, they appealed last year, they were, um, I believe we may have amended their value and they were okay with it. It's lowered because of depreciation to that ten point six. Um, but I believe the, based on our cost manual, I feel we're right in line with market.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the. We deny or we approve what she's?
Deny their appeal.
Oh, they were appealing to go lower? Make a motion that we deny the appeal then.
I'll second that.
I move to second to deny JB twenty three twenty three, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
I think we need to charge more for the scenic view. Right up.
You're just trying to get some of your grocery money back, aren't you?
Yeah, exactly. We do Ridley's, I really don't like them.
Grocery prices just went up. You're fussing about the cars.
The personal thing, it has nothing to do with their groceries.
You're fussing about the cost of eggs, is that what you're doing?
Okay, so we have one left, uh, that we have, are prepared to present today. The rest of them we'll schedule for next Wednesday. So the, uh, last one we're gonna hear is from Craig twenty three twenty eight. Last name Newell.
But in twenty three oh nine, we're doing that next week?
No, you guys already did that.
Oh, I forgot to write it down. Somebody have that marked? Did we, I'm assuming we denied it. Melissa Meldrum?
Yes, you denied it.
Thank you.
Jen presented.
Craig, it's nice to see you up here. We could have a party or something with all your assessors. We could have a party or something with all your assessors. Try to get them out of their office spaces and come right out in the court clerks. Those are hard for us. It's nothing against you guys, I promise.
Hey, I have not met you. Welcome.
Too many things in our brains to remember.
I think you kind of know how the process works, so I'll turn it over.
I've been watching. Yes, sir.
Is this Round Valley? It is. Gammon, in the Herrick area. Craig Man Valley County, it's Prazer. This is appeal number CM two-three-two-eight. Property owner is Sean and Nicole Newell. Parcel number is RP oh oh three oh seven, oh 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 four five oh. Their address is one oh three sixty Gammon Road. It's located on Gammon Road, one oh three sixty Cascade. It consists of two point one oh two oh acres, just slightly over two acres. It includes a thirty-one sixty square foot home. It's built in two thousand. It has a grade of good plus. And you can see below that statement, there are the last three years and its history. They did offer us some comparable sales. There's an attached spreadsheet next page back. They also sent in a, you can see from their statements, that they sent in an appraisal that they had done in twenty-one. And it was older. I didn't, didn't make copies of it or use it because of its age. So can you bring it up on the screen for me, please? That's the house I'm thinking of. This used to be a part of a bigger chunk of ground. That was split up. I think it got, what, two acres? So it's a nice lot. It's sitting up a little bit. It's not as low as some of the areas that are in that zone.
Now, where are the comps that they actually provided? Are they in the same general location, or are they...
They are. They're around. They got some down. They provided some on Highway fifty-five. Their statement. Highway fifty-five, Alder Way, which is over the top, towards Scott Creek Side in north. And then they gave us one also from Cabarton on theirs.
How do you assess this? Can you go out and see if it is at Herrick Road?
It's off Herrick.
Herrick Road, yeah. This is landmark north.
There we go.
There you go.
Here's Herrick. And then Gammon Drive is right here.
Runs all the way around.
They are right. This is their property, the subject property. What's their view like versus their neighborhood?
Lots of view, the whole Round Valley to the west.
Yeah, I think their house sits up on a little bit of the dog too.
It sits up on a knoll. The argument, I did speak to the homeowners, wasn't, in the beginning, it wasn't so much about the value. I was being questioned about some square footage in a basement. It's got a walkout basement, and whenever they had the appraisal done, they claimed that the appraisers did not include and wouldn't allow them to include nine hundred and some square feet for a walkout basement. So I told them about Valley County has a huge portion of walkout basements and that we evaluate them accordingly with our pro-vale system.
So the appraiser in twenty twenty-one didn't use the walkout?
Whenever they bought the property. They're saying, it was, it looks to me like...
Conditioned space, right?
Yeah, it is.
Is the basement finished?
It's part, basement, garage, part finished walkout basement.
But the walkout basement is living area.
Yeah.
They should be on site, yes. Pop up.
About my neighbor's house in Middleton when I lived down there. Is it, I can't work that out.
There you go.
They got daylight basement with garage on the side.
Here's the garage right here and then the living.
It's conditioned underneath and... And why would you think that wouldn't be part of the square footage? I don't know. I guess I don't understand that. I don't know. That's, that was, I said, I have to count it. I mean, there's no way we can argue about this.
If it's heated square footage, it's...
It is.
It's part of the square footage.
But in the final appeal, that didn't appear. That was a conversation that we had. And that is what started this whole appeal process, I believe. And as it went through, they were asking for an adjusted amount in their appeal, excuse me.
Down to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, but they won.
Yeah, from nine sixty, nine sixty-four, and that's out of my hands. I can't adjust anything down that far.
Well, and even...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Even their comps, I mean, if you look at the comp that was provided, the thirty-two forty-four, I mean, the year built was substantially older, effective dates older, but their sell price on it is comparable to this one.
So if you look at the comps on the page we provided, the select properties on the top, our comps are below. They're on Emma Loop. There's one in Cabarton, and I can't remember the last one. It's close. They're all in the same neighborhood. They're very close. And your comps come out to two seventy-one twenty-five a square foot average. So they're just a little under the average. Yeah, and you know, they're hitting kind of in the middle. In the conditions, you could, you could play with the years, effective year. One thing that sticks out is pretty glaring right there. If you look at their grade, they're a good plus. That's a big impact. And all these other ones that are holding a little bit higher than what they have are just averages and average plus. So that really kind of, if I, if I took that away, it would make the, it wouldn't make it right. They would have a hard time keeping up, for better words.
In other words, the subject property is superior to the comps.
Yep. I'm gonna make a motion we deny CM twenty-three twenty-eight. And accept the appraised value.
I'll second that.
Would you second on favor, P C I?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So are we meeting in the morning then, or next Wednesday? No, okay.
Next Wednesday, this one, we'll pick it up.
Yeah, at nine AM.
Nine AM.
So Holy Chapel will be your first one at nine AM. And then, those scouts aren't coming. I believe, obviously, they still need to go on record with your Algar decision.
Right, right.
And then whatever email that was delivered to us today, you'll have all of those prepared and ready to go for next Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the future's will be recessing now as the Board of Equalization and reconvening on July fifth.
At nine AM.
At nine AM, thank you.
So this meeting is adjourned.
It's recess, you're recessing.
Recession.
Yep.
Let's go out for recess.